So first, let me just say I may or may not crack my voice like Peter Brady. I've had a real hard time with my voice cracking and having a laryngitis over the last several months. So acting up a little bit tonight, so please forgive me if that happens. We're under recognition.
All right, we'll start off tonight with the recognition for some staff members prior to vacation, which we just completed last week. Mr. Mike Shelburne from the elementary school was the organizer and really kind of the engine behind the Earth Day celebration. I think a lot of members of the staff involved that, including us in the community. So I want to thank Mike and the entire NBES team for that tradition ongoing. I also want to thank Caitlin Malone and the E-Board from Stucco for a fantastic website contest, which we had for our fifth and sixth graders to watch. So a lot of excitement, I think a lot of tremendous talent by our underclassmen this year. Even though I think this is one thing, it's the fact that the staff will be part of the judging as well. And last but not least, Mr. Luis Martinez, as you guys see later in this presentation, he was the person behind some of our visual representation of our fortunate graduate and our strategic plan. And Luis is a very talented person, a career art teacher for us, and he did a lot of work. So I want to thank Luis for all his work and staff for some of those visuals that you see tonight at your practice. And that's it, good evening.
Any other recognition? Can I get a motion to approve the minutes from the previous two meetings?
Can I pending the change? Mike, it was misspelled a few times in there.
Well, let's get the motion out there and approved.
Go ahead and make a motion to approve.
Second?
Second. Now, just like my name fixed in there because my last name is misspelled incorrectly, just for the record.
No worries.
My Penny will precedent through me, although it can also go on as, I don't know.
Any other comments? All those in favor? Opposed? Public participation, is any public?
I'd like to speak regarding the acceptance of minutes in the last few weeks.
I'm sorry?
I would like to speak regarding the acceptance of minutes in the last few weeks.
Okay.
For those of you that don't know, good evening. My name is Damian Sarek, and I am the Northbrook Field Teachers Association President. We are here today to address school committee policy and protocol violations that occurred during the entitled Special Northbrook Field School Committee meeting dated March 25th, 2024. On said day, you, the Northbrook Field School Committee, allowed Mrs. Heather Hawke here to defame and abuse teachers and school personnel in public session, which directly violates your own school committee policy. May I call your attention to Section BDH regarding public comment at school committee meetings? Subsection number four reads, "Improper conduct and remarks will not be allowed. Defamatory or abusive remarks are always out of order. If a speaker persists in improper conduct or remarks, the chair may terminate that individual's privilege of address." In addition, subsection number six reads as follows. Speakers may offer such objective criticisms of the school operations and programs as concern them, but in public session, the committee will not hear personal complaints of school personnel nor against any member of the school committee community. So, as Acting Chair of the NB School Committee, Mr. Ryle, why did you remain silent and allow, some might say enable, an angry parent of a former student of the Northbrook Field Elementary School to vilify, malign, and defame the reputations of our colleagues? The entire committee remained muted while Ms. Hawke here continued to violate the aforementioned school committee protocols, verbally eviscerated the good reputations of our esteemed colleagues for more than 10 minutes. Please, correct me if I'm wrong, but unless the president and chair permits a time extension, speakers will be allowed three minutes to present their material. See subsection number two regarding public comment. I have watched a YouTube recording of your special meeting on the night of March 25th, 2024 too many times. Honestly, once is too much. However, I noted that Mrs. H was not granted any time extension from you, yet she was allowed to continue her malicious rant against our esteemed colleagues. Since the rules of the meeting were not enforced, does this now set a precedent that any complaint against a teacher and/or administrator can go to an open session of a school committee meeting to complain? If so, this puts teachers and the entire school district in an impossible situation because we can't respond publicly due to open meeting privacy laws. In closing, I understand and acknowledge a person's need to be heard. However, there are guidelines and protocols that need to be followed and enforced to protect everyone's privacy. We would like to know how to move forward. We feel that you, the school committee, owe us a response. We would like to know if you have conducted any investigation into these allegations and what, if anything, you discovered. As Acting NBTA President, I have done my due diligence and spoken with my colleagues who are unjustly accused of negligence to hear their account and whether or not they were aware of any alleged bullying. Then, I was in touch with both Mrs. Priestley, Principal of Northbrook Field Elementary School, as well as Superintendent McCormick, both of whom assured me that our protocol for investigating allegations of hazing slash bullying were followed to the letter and set allegations were determined to be completely unfounded. Have you done your due diligence? May I suggest that you call another Special Northbrook Field School Committee meeting where you can share your findings with us? May I also suggest that you provide us with answers to why you blatantly disregarded and flouted your own school committee policies? I recommend that you keep a conciliatory tone during said meeting because one of my last acts of due diligence as Acting President of the Northbrook Field Teachers Association is to remind my wrongfully disparaged colleagues of their legal right to sue all of you for defamation of character.
Thank you.
Just wanted to let you know you went four minutes, two seconds, and nobody took any extension either. So you're not...
Check ten. Just so you know.
I'm just not arguing the minutes. You're all boarding, check the tape.
Yep, check ten.
I understand. Nobody stopped you either, that's all I'm saying. Anything else in the communications? Or allegations?
None.
Southern Mr. County Educational Collaborative update?
All right, so I invited Honorable Lonwell to present to the committee tonight to discuss some policy changes. That's my approach. What was yours?
Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. So I am the Executive Director of Southern Western County Educational Collaborative, and I've been in this role for the past four years. But I started off at the collaborative in 2019. Prior to that, I was the Special Education Administrator for Grafton Public Schools, which is also a member of Southern Western County Educational Collaborative. I'm here today because Northbrook Field is one of 15 member districts. And I'm here today to hopefully secure a vote to begin what's called a capital surplus fund. And that is for the collaborative. And before you get worried about any sort of fiscal responsibilities of this nature for Northbrook Field, it's a capital surplus fund. At no point does the collaborative ask any of its member districts to fund this. So that's one of the big questions that come up. In terms of regulations, I need to get two-thirds majority of those 15 school districts in order to open up this fund. And so this is my sixth visit. I will conclude my visits at the end of May to all 15 member school districts. And the reason that I do want to do this is our students that we have, we're one of 24 collaboratives in common of Massachusetts. We happen to be the smallest one, but it doesn't mean that we don't do very big things. We receive students from those 15 member districts and on average about eight to 10 other non-member school districts that send students to us. Those are students who are AIPs, who require a higher degree of care, education, and relationship building than their school districts can provide for Monday's internet. So we've been around since actually 1975, so 49 years in. And in my short time that I've been in the role as the Executive Director, a capital reserve fund has never been established. For what reason, I don't know. But I look at this as a safety net or a parachute for the collaborative. Right now, we have two campuses. Our elementary school is located in Southridge, and our middle and high school is located in Dudley, a couple miles down the road. We also have our intensive special needs program housed at the Dudley site, where we have medically fragile students in a small program that provides their needs as well. So with that, both of the campuses are rented. At this point, I have zero capital. Our relationship with our landlords are quite good. We've been tenants of theirs for well over 15 years at both of those locations. But I want to be a good steward for the collaborative. And unlike the school district, I can't go to MasB or the MSBA to secure funds or get bonding. And without any capital, if I went into any bank and said, "I'd like a loan to purchase either of these properties," or find a new property or build a property for our students, I would simply get laughed out of the bank because there's no collateral in my hands since we do rent. With that, I am seeking each of the member school districts to consider voting to set this fund up. And there will also be a limit of $2 million for the fund. We'll build that up slowly over time. And when it comes time to spend monies, we're able to do that, whether it's improvements on properties, whether it's purchasing wheelchair vans, which can be incredibly expensive, it'll be six figures for each one. What are other types of upkeep? And you say, "Well, why won't the landlord take care of that?" They do. And like I said, they have a very good relationship with our landlords. Our elementary school just put in a playground playset at that site last summer. With the help of our landlord, we donated a lot of money towards the project. But being able to defray some of those costs is also important so that I don't come back to the Board of Directors, the Board of Directors being the superintendents of those 15 school districts, and say, "We need to increase tuitions." We're trying very hard to keep our tuition as low for our member districts. We're incredibly competitive compared to private schools and even collaborators nearby. With that, I'm hoping to secure this because there are things, there are projects that we want to engage in. We want to look at developing green space for our campuses, much like the playground. We do have accessibility issues with our medically fragile, our wheelchair-bound students. They can't get out to the playground areas for the green spaces, so making sure that that's accessible, that'll cost some money as well. And we'd like to help our landlords out by perhaps digging into this fund down the road. So I look at it from not only having that capital to make improvements on properties, but also to be ready, sure our landlord, say, "We're done being rented, we're going to sell the property." Both of our leases have a right to first refusal, so that's great, wonderful. If they decide to sell off the property, we have that first right to bid in, but without any sort of down payment on that, we have zero money in our bank account to do so. So I'm looking at it as a savings account. I'm looking at it as a way to protect ourselves as well as to try to keep tuition costs down for our member districts. With that, do you have any questions for me? Because I'd be happy to entertain you.
This is basically just a restructuring of how you can allocate money within the collaborative?
Right, it would allow us to set aside a fund with a limit of $2 million, build that up over time, just like any sort of savings account, so that in case of a true rainy day, we would be at the ready. Right now, I feel like we're sorely not ready for that.
So if there's a motion on the floor, because he's asking for a vote. So if there's a motion?
He wants to move to approve.
Sorry, to approve the establishment of the...
Yes, move to approve the...
Just let me show that I understood what there's... Is there a second?
Second.
God, were any other questions?
Any questions? So if the member districts vote in favor of all this, what's the next step in establishing this fund? So you get approval from the districts? What happens next? Do you have to come back to us with what the setup is, or how does...
No, there are some other collaboratives that have done this in recent years. So we're consulting with them, already have them with my Director of Finance, to set up that account. We have a similar account, and it's for our insurance purposes for retirees of the property. And we've been donating and issuing monies into that whenever we have surplus. It's a whole PEBB account, and so we're trying to get that fund up as well. Again, the only time that we do that is when we run on a surplus. This year, we look like we're running on a bit of a surplus, which is good. The reasons for, we've lost our two staff, and their salaries were relatively high, and they were in unique positions, very difficult to fill. As you probably have heard, the labor market's pretty lousy right now, and it's hard to find teachers, never mind anyone, in terms of any sort of labor market like this, it's tough. So we've had these salaries on the books, and we're right now actually running at an excess in terms of our students based on our budget for this year. So as soon as this year, what I would do is go to the Board or the Superintendents in June on our last meeting and say, "Hey, this is what our books look like. We suggest that we drop this amount of money to start the account." As we move through the years, I wouldn't have to come back to school committees for any sort of vote. It would be much like that whole PEBB account. At the end of every fiscal year, sit down with the Board of Directors, we'd say, "We have some funds. Why don't we put some money into that so that that account can grow and be there for our retirees?" And so the allocation of funds is run by the Board with my advisement. Or any type of spending, I would need their approval.
Any other questions? So I have a question. Why is the money not returned to the supporting towns?
That does happen, that does happen sometimes.
So the town gave you money for a product, process, or a program. You didn't spend all the money that they gave you, right? We as a committee aren't allowed to do that. We're not allowed to take money, put it into a separate account, and use it for whatever purpose we want. So why should we allow that to happen with town money? I just, I would like to understand that.
We're doing that as well this year. Sometimes it'll be in the form of credit, sometimes it'll be in the form of refunds in proportion to the number of students that you have involved in this compared to the total amount. So that will be happening this year.
But I'm not asking why in addition to. I'm asking why that isn't the case. So why is the money not just returned back to the town if you don't need it? In proportion to what they've sent you, why is that money not just returned back to the town? The town's paid you to provide a service, you didn't need as much money as you suggested they do. So why is that money not returned back to the taxpayers of Northbrook Field and the other 14 other communities? I'd like to understand that.
Some years, it may happen, and again, it goes to the Board, and we have our Board meetings, much like these, where we sit down and say, "Well, we do have some excess of funds." Unlike a school district, we don't receive a yearly allowance in terms of a budget. We say, "Based on our enrollment numbers, based on what we project we will have for students," for example, "This will be our budget, and these are the numbers that we'll have." The past two and a half years since we stepped out of COVID, the referral rate for our collaborative, as well as other private special education schools, has gone through the roof, absolutely through the roof. There are wait lists all over the place. You know, speak with the man at NAP about how some difficulty of finding places for students. It's difficult across the entire state. So we're actually able to run right now at an excess of students compared to what we probably might have. So again, it comes down to the decision by the Board. It'll say, "These are the funds that we think we will have in excess for any fiscal year. How would we like to allocate those across those three options?"
Any questions? There's a motion on the floor to approve the establishment of the capital fund for the Southern Western County Educational Collaborative. And there's a second, all those in favor? Opposed? Okay, you got it. I'll sign that vote.
All right, I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
School committee representative report?
Thank you. So we're going to start off with our senior barbecue basketball game, which was held on Friday, April 5th, in the gym. And unfortunately, the staff won by four points. It was very fun, though. The loss didn't hit as hard because everyone was just enjoying themselves and having fun. It was that sort of competitive that still, like, both teams can joke and laugh around with each other, which was incredible. I am not an athlete, but I did play. I started, which was insane. But it was a lot of fun, and I really hope the tradition lasts for a very long time. Moving on, the week before April vacation was our Spring Spirit Week. We had different themes for each days. And the fifth and sixth graders were there at our lip sync that we held on Friday. Our lip sync is like a seven through 12 class versus class competition. The seniors won, which was amazing. We held up our streak. We, NAP, won the last three years in a row. And our spirit days for that week, Monday was Neon Day, Tuesday was Soccer Mom versus Barbecue Dad, Wednesday was Wilderness Wednesday, Thursday was Teacher Sue Swap, and Friday was Class Color Day. We had lots of participation in that spirit week. The students very much seemed to enjoy it. We had our spring conference, which was the Thursday before break. And we had two groups of members running workshops. It was very fun. Sad to have finished my last student council conference. But overall, it was run very well, and I think our members learned a lot. Upcoming information, our Executive Board elections will be held on Monday, May 6th to elect our new board for the 2024-2025 school year. Our Teacher Appreciation Week will be held from May 6th to the 10th. Each day, we'll be giving out hints to teachers, and at the end of the week, we will hold our Teacher Appreciation Breakfast for all staff, and we will be giving them their superlatives for the year. Next, we have Junior Conference and Shadow Days sometime in late May. We're going to be holding our Junior Conference event. And along with Junior Conference this year, we'll be working with Advent to schedule and organize Shadow Days. Class Day and Field Day will be held on March 31st. Students will start the day in classes and transition to the elementary school for their class day ceremony, and then they will head into Field Day from there. Class elections will be held in late May or early June, sometime around there. And those will be held for rising eighth through 12th graders. The rising seventh graders will have their elections in the fall. And our annual lock-in is going to be held on Friday, June 7th into Saturday, June 8th. This is an event for student council members only. We stay over the school and get locked in and participate in workshops and run team-building activities until about midnight. And then we get just, I have free time. Most kids don't ever sleep. They just play games and have fun all night long, and it is a very memorable experience. Yes.
All right. I would like to thank you for your time and service here. Seriously, your reports are very thorough and helpful for us, so I appreciate it. Especially since she's, she had to jump in again this year. We weren't even supposed to have Olivia this year. So she stepped up and did a whole other year, kind of needed these exciting meetings. Thank you again, appreciate it. School committee reports. Regionalization's on the agenda. There is no update from the Regionalization Committee. We have, still waiting for feedback from the Chair of the Regionalization Committee.
We're going to need a new school committee...
I sent a video log to the school, excuse me, to the selectmen about six weeks ago. I let them know, and I have not heard anything back from them, so I think we have to choose.
I think we elected you as this...
I thought it was the, I apologize. I thought it was the town moderator that chose the committee member.
No, we...
We did that?
Yeah, we voted.
You did that for me?
Yeah.
Appreciate it. Well, then I nominate. Well, we should probably do that at tonight's meeting. So is there any nominations for somebody to fill the Regionalization Committee role for the school committee?
Well, I'll nominate him. Nobody else can nominate anybody, I'll nominate him. We need to plan before, you know, before...
No, I agree, I agree. I absolutely agree with you. So if there were no nominations, I'd nominate him. Anybody else?
Can I second it? Is that not an emotion, or is it an emotion, or...
No, that was absolutely an emotion.
Okay.
Any others?
Would they go opposed?
Was it?
Do you have to... I'll accept a nomination.
So all those in favor? You got it. Thanks, buddy.
Thank you, thank you, Tim. We did it.
God bless you, my friend. Financial reports.
I'll have to talk to you about just who I could ask to give.
I'll give you names and numbers.
No, I got you.
As we do every month, we attach assigned warrants plus the updated bench reports for your review. This focus is here to help facilitate any questions that there are.
Any questions on the financial report? Moving on, superintendent's report.
All right, so a couple of quick updates. We did fill another NBES ABA position. That person just recently started the last week and a half or so. That was for Southern who designed the role. As I mentioned earlier tonight, in our recognition, earlier this year, we had a group of about 20 people. Olivia was part of this group, who we developed our new strategic plan for the district for 2024 through 2027. And we did a lot of great work. We came up with a lot of great artifacts and kind of expressing what we want to go in words, but we felt that we really need to visualize all this. So as I mentioned earlier, we worked with Mr. Martinez, who has a background in graphic design, who's also our shared art teacher for both schools. And I attached some of the visuals that he prepared for us, that we sent out to families, we knocked on the webpage. But you have both the strategic plan, a couple different versions, and you also, fortunately, graduated, which will be showcased here at the high school and the elementary school as well. And those will be in all classrooms. And it's very timely, too, because we have an AS visit coming up in the next week or so. And we want to really, we're proud of the work that we did. We want to show off the work we did. So again, thank you, Mr. Martinez. I was very impressed with the work that he did to make that happen. On April 1st, the district was awarded an additional $11,000 grant for our PLTW initiatives that we started about a year and a half ago. This was through the One Eight Foundation, which is, I can give you a brief review of what that is. It's a philanthropic organization that focuses on really funding schools and school districts to support STEM education, some science education. So we are very fortunate to receive that grant award. That will now total $16,000 for our next year's PLT real launch program for STEM, which is our K through six group. On Wednesday, a group of us, myself, Mr. Diario, who's previously kind of taking shifts, will head to the DCE Center. The 1A meeting will happen on Wednesday, and we get to meet with members of the 1A Foundation, but also districts from across the state, and discuss ways to kind of roll this out and support our teachers and our students with these new initiatives. Additionally, met with Chief Smith prior to vacation, this is something we've been working on since the fall. We, it's called the Handle With Care Initiative, and simply what this is, is a way for the police department and the schools to communicate when a student may be coming to school with some trauma. It's confidential, but it gives the stu, uh, the staff, principal, adjustment counselor, school counselor, an update if a student's coming into school after an event that took place, maybe that student's home, when the police were called. The school district can be ready for that student, support him or her the best that we can. The Handle With Care Initiative is something that is used across districts across the state. Quaden, which is our neighbor, I guess to the east, northish?
Northish.
Somewhere out there. It just, was just adopted in the last month, month and a half. With Ash West, Garter, I'm sure there are some other districts that also have Handle With Care initiatives going on, so very excited to get this going. We'll be doing a training in the next couple of weeks to, with both building-based admin and our chief of police, to make sure they're on the same page on how to roll this out with the two groups. And like I said, I add to the packet some information on, or show you some of the visuals for both the initiative and the portrait graduate. Any questions about the visuals, or?
Question on that Handle With Care.
Sure.
Go back to that real quick.
Yeah.
Just, is it, so, can the police inform the, the school of what to expect, or is there a two-way communication pipeline that opens up between the support staff within the school and whoever is outside of the school that's also possibly handling that same situation? Does the, the police kind of like the hub for putting those two groups together?
No, no. So what, what this does is if there's a situation at, at someone's home, and the police are involved, and there's a student living at that home, they come to school the next day, it just gives the common notification to the school, without getting into names, without getting into why the police were there, that this student may be coming to, coming to school that next day with some anxiety, with some, some fear, so we can prepare to support that student. If down the road, that student needs additional supports, we can work with the family to orchestrate that. But this is an initial kind of, make sure the school.
So it's really just letting the school?
Letting us know, and we don't get to ask questions of the police department. They don't share information. It's simply notified by us that, that we can support this student when they come to school.
I'm looking at the webpage right now, Tim, and it, it says that the day there's a, a number of things that might happen in someone's house, and then if those things happen, they will go to the school or the daycare and send an email or a fax that simply says, "Handle Johnny With Care," and that's it.
We will have a shared Google Sheet with the police officer at the school, and that exactly what Matthew just said, that information we received. So we don't get details of what happened, but just make sure we support that student when they arrive to school.
Sounds like a good initiative. I like that idea. Sorry. Did this visual interrupt that? Because they're really nice.
Additionally, I, I added to the packet some updates. I just, and I added to the packet, as you can see, the packet's quite lengthy this month, our bullying prevention intervention plan, which, if you read through it, you know was adopted back in 2017. And just kind of, this, the three pages I wrote about the, the bullying intervention plan, just some, just some broad strokes, general updates to what's going on with that. As mentioned in the plan, you know, we now have two adjustment counselors, one of these school support students. That was not, not accurate from what the, the plan was initially written. We have expanded school counseling this year, as you know, some grant funding and some reallocation of, we were able to bring in some groups to, to, to help facilitate one-on-one counseling and small group counseling. So, you know, we, we address them those things with students individually in small groups. And we've had reporting mechanisms that are, you know, well in place. We have a, a phone line that goes to Mr. Diorio, who's previously in my phone. There's a separate answering service for someone to, to initiate a bullying complaint, and there's also a Google Sheet online that people can access. And, and thinking about what we've done, as I mentioned here in prior meetings, both schools have, within their advisory curriculum, whether it's through second step, the elementary school, or the internally developed curriculum at the high school, we have curriculum around anti-bullying, bullying education, and harassment. We've had the DA's office in this year, we have them in the past three years I've been here, to present to both schools on how to report bullying, what bullying is, what students and staff can do to support each other through these endeavors. And just recently, we, we had, through another grant, they're called Echo Dance Club. They're from New York City. They came in and they presented, or they performed at both schools, and they are touring. This was, I think, prior to vacation. Fantastic. And their message that they weave throughout their performance is around speaking up against bullying. So it was well received by both schools. Our elementary schools, kids loved it, our high school students loved it. So another way that we talk about engaging that conversation. And then lastly, there is part of that, that packet, is within your packet, there is the actual form, the incident reporting form, that people can report an incident of bullying harassment. And, and that's the form that we use at both schools. We follow that form, we go through that form, and that's how we share out information with families once the process is completed. So I want to kind of give you that quick synopsis of what we do on a regular basis. And it, it's, it's a process that I think that we, that both the principals follow to a T, and I think they do a great job of making sure that students and families are aggressive what's going on.
Mr. McCormick asked a question in regards to the term aggressor. Is there a definition of that somewhere within, well, where is the definition of aggressor?
I'd have to look through, I, it might be in either this form or it's in the law piece, MGL piece. It should be alleged aggressor, because sometimes the alleged aggressor is not really aggressor, so it's someone who is, is bullying or initiating that act of bullying harassment.
Yeah. One of the things that came out of the meeting last that we had about that was, some of the concerns were that the aggressor in the parent's account was someone that retaliated from being bullied. So what happened was the person defended themselves, and then the label of aggressor was given to that child. How, how does that happen?
How does?
So somebody was bullied, and they, so they didn't, and the person who was bullied decided not to put up with it and give something back, and then the label of aggressor was then applied. This was in more than one person that I had talked to. So I just wonder a little bit, I mean, everyone's got their own account and stuff like that, but I guess I would like more clarification on the term aggressor.
Yeah, and I, I think that, no, it's case by case, and sometimes when people are talking about their own situation, it's their situation, or a child's situation, you know, we throw on these terms, and, and sometimes people are mislabeled using these terms. What I think of aggressor or alleged aggressor is the person who is initiating that bullying harassment.
That's what I would think, yeah.
Right? And the target are, are the students who are, you know, the, are receiving that alleged bullying harassment, right? And what we try to do is, is we try to interview all the people involved, including the witnesses who may just be innocent bystanders, to be able to see what's going on. I'll have to look through the documents again. I know I, I thought in one of the documents there was a definition of what the word aggressor means, but that's something that we could revisit.
Any other questions? Administrator's report. Excuse me. I warned you, I'm losing my voice. I can't. Go ahead, John. You're looking at me. Everybody else has their head down. They've learned the lesson. Don't look up.
All right. So on March 28th, we had our career fair for students in grades seven through 12. Students and staff all commented on the success of this event. Students got to choose three different career paths to learn about, and then they rotated each session, lasted about 30 minutes. And it was really a great opportunity for the students to learn what it takes to have a successful career after high school. At the end of the day, I thought this was great. Five different presenters actually came up, made a point to find me and tell me what a great job our students did. One of our, one of our presenters said it's the best school he's ever been, and, and he can't wait to come back. So I was really proud of our students for this. Be back from the surveys showed that the event was well done and informative and helpful, and we're really looking forward to doing this again next year. As part of our, Mr. McCormick touched on this a little bit, but as part of our bullying prevention plan, we had a performance by the Echo Dance team on April 9th. That was really great, and I know Ms. Priestley's kids loved it, we, our kids loved it. I loved it. It was a really cool performance to see. It grabbed the student's attention, and then they had a really great message about bullying and how to stand up for people who were being bullied. So I, I really thought it was awesome, sort of our kids. On April 11th, 20 students were chosen to work with our ideas initiative to promote equity and achievement for all students. Our students spent the morning in an interactive seminar discussing ways they can help create a supportive environment where all students can experience academic and social success. The session lasted from about 8:30 till 10:30, and I have to say that the students all told me afterwards, and we did a debrief, it didn't feel like it lasted two hours. They said it, time just flew by, and they really loved doing this, and they're looking forward to the second seminar we're going to have shortly after we get done with our NDS visit. Our work-based learning program is underway, and we have five students who are part of the internship program with FlexCon Corporation. These students are learning important job skills that will help them become successful employees after graduation. The hope here is that these students will be offered a full-time job and a career with FlexCon at the end of their term, there at the end of the school year. Three of our students are working in the, what they call their beta program, and one student is working in human resources. And just, you know, the beta program is, it's, it's their critical thinking skills to help achieve improved efficiency by reducing waste, streamlining, streamlining workflows and empowering employees. This is really great, because we talk about critical thinking every day. I know Ms. Priestley does we do so, but really great to see, for the students to see how this, what we do in school matters, and I think that's really important. Ms. Pellicia is taking 10 seniors, tomorrow, actually, to participate in the Blackstone Ed Hub Senior School Field Trip at Polar Park. This event features regional employers hiring right out of high school or offering certification education programs. Students, when they go tomorrow, are going to have the opportunity, opportunity to interview and apply for jobs and to enroll in post-secondary programs and walk away with a solid plan after they leave with a plan for graduation. So again, another great thing for our high school seniors. Of course, we're looking forward to our NDS visit. I did share, oh, I'm sorry, I'll get to that second. We're looking forward to our NDS visit. They come in this Sunday, and they'll be here till Wednesday, May 1st. The NDS Accreditation Services Framework for Schools to Meet Their Own Goals While, For Student Learning, While Maintaining Alignment With Research-Based Standards For Accreditation That Define The Characteristics Of High-Quality Effective Learning Communities. It also serves to assess the systems in place at our school for ongoing self-reflection and our school's commitment to and capacity for continuous growth and transformation. This is a very important step for NVHS, is it gives us an opportunity to really show off all the great things that are happening. I think we're the little school that could, and our district doesn't get enough props, so we're excited to welcome the asking to our school. And I did share with you, I only had two, I apologize, some of our flyers we're going to send out for our big event, May 8th, and we appreciate the chair's support on this and the school committee's support. John Morel will be here to speak, to perform his play Dirt. 5 o'clock, we start. We're going to have about 12 resource tables that'll be here to talk to our community and our families. John will do a performance from 6 to 7, and then at 7 o'clock, he'll come over here along with members of the community for meet and greet, and then our band will perform, and Mr. Martinez will have a big art exhibit set up in the gym. So looking forward to that. We're going to have lots of food, entertainment, information, and again, another chance for us to show off our school and some of the things we're doing here. And one last thing, I'm sorry, I didn't put this on, but I do want to point out, we got a grant, I'm pretty excited about this. We have a grant, so prom is this Friday for us, as you know, but we got a grant from the DA's office, and we are doing it for the first time, and hopefully this becomes a condition, an after-prom event here in our high school. So it's going to be like a lock-in. Students will come here, we're going to open the doors at 10:30. We're going to have some inflatables. We're using the grant money to buy food, inflatables, games, and so our hope is that all the kids are going to come back and do a lock-in and spend the night with us here in the school and make some great memories, and then they leave with a pancake breakfast from both the Hanson's. So it should be really fun about, so looking forward to that.
That's fantastic.
And by the way, they already asked me, are you going to stay all night for this? And I said, no, I go to bed at 9 o'clock, I'll be here till about 11. But I said I would invite the school committee, you're welcome to spend the night with us.
Oh, so generous of you.
So there you go, that's all I have. Thank you.
I talked to a bunch of kids today, they seemed very excited.
Yeah, the kids are super stoked about this, so. In fact, I'm sorry, but one thing they always say is, why didn't you do this last year? We, we did it in the last year, so I think this is going to be a lot of fun.
Ms. Priestley, you're up.
Sure. So to answer Ms. Matthews' question, the term aggressor is defined, you defined it in our, you looked.
Yeah, it says retaliatory in there.
It does. It says bullying, cyberbullying, or retaliation towards a student, so it kind of covers all of that.
Define, the definition actually uses not aggressor, it's perpetrator and victim. Those are the terms used in the, in MGL, so.
Oh, they are?
Yeah. So I guess aggressor would be the, the problem, in that, according to the messaging of law.
Oh. Okay. Different connotation to my mind. One of the messages that I appreciated the most by the Echo Dance team that Mr. Diorio mentioned and also Mr. McCormick mentioned was that before you can respect others, you need to respect yourself. And we know oftentimes that the aggressors of bullying are often in need of intervention themselves, and so I was appreciative that that message was communicated, because it was a lot of taking care of yourself and being kind to yourself and giving yourself grace, which I think a lot of our students need to hear. So to me, that was, that was another good part of, of that presentation. But in my report, I did not talk about the Echo Dance team, although I did love it. It was fantastic. Hold on, I'm trying to move my computer here. And I don't want to miss anything.
It's on page 110.
I know, it's, I think I'm moving, like, this pad is cooperating with me. So we are, as a staff, working on revising our reporting standards. So as you know, the elementary school's standard-based report card, and some of the standards that are on our report card are more in line to the curriculum programs that we're using, rather than the Massachusetts standards, the frameworks, which makes it difficult when you are switching programs, as we did for math. Really, we need to be reflecting on what skills the state is asking us to teach our students, and the programs support those skills. So we are working on kind of tweaking that a little bit so that they're more in line with the frameworks. That's a big, a big push that we're working on right now, especially as we're transitioning to the Alma Student Information System. So before we start putting in those proficiencies into Alma, we want to make sure that they're solid. So that's kind of been some big work that we're, we're undertaking right now. The Port of Three grades closed, so those report cards are available in the portal. I included the link to the portal in my last newsletter. The MCAS dates are there for everyone. We have MAC coming up in May, and then later in May for Science, grade five. We had our Earth Day, as Mr. McCormick mentioned. Shout out to Mr. Sheldon for organizing it. It was awesome. The stomp rockets were, you know, it was, it was exciting, because you did have the air compressor. We got some hype on that.
I do owe you a visit back. I'll, I'll reach out to you.
But we're going to come back. We're going to go back.
We're going to go back and watch them for real.
Yeah.
Mission Control canceled. It also gets a little wild outside that.
It was a little wet, yeah. There was a torrential downwind. So we are going to, we're going to welcome Mr. Canada back for the.
I love fire.
Launching rockets. But I did include a YouTube link to just a slideshow of some of the activities from Earth Day.
You want to help welcome, I love stomp rockets.
It was fun. It was fun. We were able to find some indoor spaces for everyone. Thank you to the high school for being flexible and, and offering some spaces over there. We ended up being able to have it all at the elementary school, but we had archery and bike safety in the gym at the same time, and I wasn't sure. But we had archery and bike safety in the gym at the same time. And I wasn't sure if it was going to help. But it did. We had the driver up and shout out to Mr. Marr and Mr. Reardon for organizing those two events. And then kindergarten registration. For all families who are on the town census, letters were mailed home. But if families were not on the census or if they do not receive letters from the school to enroll students who are age five as of August thirty-first, to reach out to the school for enrollment packet. That's it for me. Any questions?
Ms. Priestley, I heard that before our next meeting, a certain administrator is making a big North American stage debut.
That may be true. That may be true. I would encourage everyone to check it out.
It's going to be incredible.
Olivia is also in the show. So, you know, we have a number of students, we have a number of high school students.
It is momia and I am very excited. It features all the songs from ABBA, which is a nice way I find a lot of people don't like to go to musicals because they're like, well, I don't know the show. I don't know the music, whatever. And this is a good way for people to connect what they already know to a show that they're not going to go watch. And I think it's.
Four high school students in it?
There's me, Alexis, Becca, Dante, and Taylor.
What are the dates?
The dates are the third, fourth, and fifth of May and the tenth, eleventh, and twelfth of May.
And how did that not make it in your report? It shows there a little bit of the out. Like, I don't understand. So. That's on top.
She doesn't want to mix up her.
Tickets are available online. Yeah, tickets are available online. It's all over the Theater Guild's Facebook page to purchase tickets online. It's going to be a really amazing show. Any of you been next door recently can see the sets on stage. They look incredible.
A lot of hard work on the Guild.
All right. Any other questions? Our student services report.
Slayer is always such a tough act to follow. Always so dry afterward. On March eighteenth, twenty twenty-four, the staff received a training presented by Jeff Culpersen, the district psychologist entitled Thinking and Learning: Guiding Student Growth, Shining a Light on What Testing Can Tell Us. The training provided information on what cognitive assessments measure, what they tell us about a student, and how assessments results are related to learning. Since I've written this, I've begun actually working on the follow-up training, which actually pinpoints the areas of weakness for each of the weaknesses in the cognitive profile. That will be the training that staff will receive on March twenty-ninth during our meeting. And then on March sixth, we'll be beginning, we'll be beginning to talk about how to teach kids strategies. Thank you very much. Thanks.
That is even retirement by.
Yeah, yeah, it will be. How to teach kids strategies to overcome their cognitive challenges. A document outlining the processes and procedures for all aspects of the I E P process from referral to I E P implementation has been developed and disseminated to district staff. It is called an infograph. That's a new word for me. And it was developed, you can thank everything that looks pretty. You can thank Caitlin for that. And it really, it not only provides staff with a one-stop place for everything, but everything that is in it is tied directly to regulation or legal advisors. So it was an extended school year schedule has been developed. This, along with the identification of students, students commonly eligible for the services, led to the determination of staffing needs for the program and the positions have been posted internally. But I've already started to get people saying they want to work. So that's great. And we welcomed Tracy Burlingham as a special education teacher at the elementary school on March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four, and she has been an amazing find. She provides great service to our students. So that's it for me. Any questions?
We have a report from the director of facilities. Any questions on this report? If you had a chance to read it.
Also, I have one from Justin.
And we have one from the director of technology as well. Are there any questions there? Well, I have one. We have a Google Chrome laptop exploded some other place. I don't know that's happening at our school. Is there some methodology that's in place to define if there's some risk in the Google Chrome laptops that we've given out?
I think it's worth educating.
Didn't mean explode, by the way.
No, it's true. I actually, I had a work laptop where the battery started swelling. And the MOS pad was actually being forced out of the case. So there's an actual bulge you can see in the laptop. I brought it to my I T department. They treated it like it's taking time off. So I think it's worth educating kids who are given these laptops of the dangers of lithium ion battery. And if they do notice anything, like, don't, you know, just, if you see anything wrong with it, let someone know.
Yeah, very good.
Because the worst thing that could happen is it burns the child and it's not, it's a very hot, fast burn. So it's not good. But I think it's worth educating the kids on the safety aspect of it.
I agree. I just didn't know if there was anything that's come out from.
There has. I know that personally at Moxbridge and we talked about it a few times since it happened and they did, they had the company, the vendor for those machines test them all and according to what I heard, there was still a multi-machine assembly in the Bush. But that doesn't mean that they have other districts. But we do, Justin is on top of it. Anytime a student brings a Chromebook down to him that isn't working right or is acting kind of funky, he takes care of it and we're constantly sending Chromebooks out to be refurbished and sent back to us.
I just think that's a real concern for parents and district education psychologists. That's all. Cool. Anything else on the new insurance reports? I think we're not moving on to old business. So and that's the note for Phil on entry basement inventory update. And I understand that we don't have yet still a full complete inventory. So I would.
This is complete from the emergency management group. We're still waiting on the outpack inventory. So I need to know them on multi-patient, but I believe they said you guys are currently, what, sixty percent done with that inventory? So that should be going on.
Okay. I, I think since it's not finished, we should probably look for something to make more of a table discussion until the next meeting. So we can hopefully get a complete inventory.
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Policies, there's no policy updates I'm aware of. Under new business curriculum updates?
All right. So I attached a, it's a two or three page, there are about two new curriculums that I'm recommending based on recommendations by the principals and their instruction leadership teams. First, we did kind of a year-long pilot at the elementary school. We piloted both Way of Wisdom and Intereading. As you probably have heard, we discussed in previous meetings, we're looking to revamp our our reading, writing curriculum for K through six. So we had teachers test out different products over the course of the year and then meet monthly to kind of share out what's been going on, what's working, what hasn't. Ms. Priestley has sent out teachers to other districts to see different, both these curriculums can practice at other settings. And the team in the school landed on to what's called inter-reading. And I just gave you a brief example of what inter-reading is all about. We feel that this is going to really bolster our reading capabilities of our students. Not that what we were doing is necessarily wrong, but there's a better, we found, we think, you think. And we, and we've talked to enough professionals of this at this point, there's a better way to get our students reading and writing at a higher capacity. So we recommend, I recommend that we go into reading for grades K through six. And then secondly, we, and this started when I was actually really a principal, we started having conversations and investigating what is called Open Sci Ed, which is a middle school science curriculum that is very strongly G C S supported. And this really kind of flips the switch, if you will, about how we teach and we deliver instruction to our students. This is really inquiry-based learning, inquiry-based approach where students are really driving a lot of the conversation. The teacher acts as, as a true facilitator in this curriculum. But it is aligned with Next Generation Science Standards and it really, really focuses on those critical thinking skills. And so part of this initiative would, would give our teacher some training and also give me some support with curriculum supplies. And we, we were offered a grant through Open Sci Ed to help support and fund this for the next three years. So again, I think that we've done our homework on this. Mr. Diorio has actually been a prior district where they've used this curriculum at the middle school with great success. And this is kind of the way that middle school science is moving towards. So I recommend that we adopt Open Sci Ed as well.
Okay. So I will accept the motion on inter-reading. And then we'll do Open Sci Ed separately. So is there a motion on the floor for?
Most of sect, inter-reading. We're doing that one first, you said?
Yes.
Good recommendation for inter-reading.
Yeah. Is there a second? Second. Any discussion? Any questions?
So what are some of the strategies like to, like, understand? You know, especially with COVID and kids being out of, out of school and they were all learning. I'm sure that had a major impact on reading, writing skills. What are the new, what is it like, just brief overview kind of like, how are they going to?
So there's a great focus on phonics, vocabulary development, reading comprehension, and then into writing skills. And then what I think has been a disconnect is sometimes hasn't, those all haven't happened. And I think this, this program, this curriculum allows us to meet the students where they're at and build capacity while really focusing on those four core skills.
Can I add to that?
Yeah, go ahead.
So what the science of reading is telling us, looking at the research, and this isn't new research, it's just research that people are starting to pay attention to. Especially given that the current programs that a lot of people have been using are not research-based. There's just no, there's no studies to support the methodology behind the instruction. But the programs that are being looked at now, the theory behind it is that it's a, it's a knowledge building curriculum, so building schema and giving students opportunities to learn about different topics. So there's a lot of connections to all genres of literature, but specifically to topics in the sciences and social sciences. It builds vocabulary for students. The language structure, verbal reasoning, those are all pieces that are explicitly developed that the program that we're currently using does not address. The phonics and the phonemic awareness, I will say that the elementary school does a very good job. We use Foundations Integrity. Those are separate programs that we use for our youngest readers that are showing that that piece, that word recognition piece of the learning of early literacy is very strong. But the other components, the language comprehension, the knowledge building, the vocabulary, the verbal reasoning, and the knowledge of literacy and language structures is just not there. And, and we're seeing that not only in our students' comprehension and the fluency that they're not demonstrating, but also in their writing. And as Mr. McCormick said, there's that writing piece of being able to take what they know and turn that into written text is, is something that we're looking to build. So in our pilots, we compared our two, the two programs that were being piloted this year with Wisdom and Intereading. And the teachers were able to, you know, through the process, kind of fill out a rating form and Intereading just came out so much higher. So we were able to go to another school to, as he said, kind of talk to their reading specialists and the teachers who are using it, observe a lesson and really to brief with them to make sure that that was the direction we wanted to go in. Really excited about that, looking to that model.
Any other questions, comments? All in favor? Both. And a motion for Open Sci Ed?
I'll move to Open Sci Ed.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion, questions?
What are the Next Generation Science Standards?
That's what the new standards are called. So it's, it's, they kind of repackage them. And there's, there's more of a critical thinking element that are kind of embedded into those skills. And there's also another layer of STEM tools as well. So what Open Sci Ed does is it kind of blends life science and STEM together. So that when they, when we roll this out, you know, we're not, we're not expecting the teacher to teach all of Open Sci Ed standards in one year. It's two or three per year. So they'll still be teaching all of the same life science standards they had in teaching. So it's a, it's a, it's a thoughtful rollout over three years.
Critical thinking is good.
It is. And that's, you know, if you look at the, the way M C A S has shifted the last few years, that's, that's the new focus. And that's where a lot of our students across the Commonwealth really struggle is with some of those skills. So we're trying to click, try to, to focus on doing that on a day-to-day basis in all departments.
Any other questions? All those in favor? Next item on the agenda is N V H S Program Studies and.
So I believe, so every year we present this, I believe, Mr. Yar is going to kind of give you the overview of the twenty-four, twenty-five program studies.
Yeah. So we don't have a lot of changes. We've, we've made about five or six changes that I just wanted to bring to your attention. And I think Mr. McCormick shared the program of studies with you. But a couple of things on page ten, our T A of Teaching Assistant Positions. It's not going to count towards the student's GPA anymore. It'll be more like a pass fail because it's not a true course. So we've changed that. So it won't count towards the GPA on page. The course will still be offered though. On page eighteen, we did add a new course in E L A in English to support our students' needs. It's called Composition and Grammar. It's going to have a strong focus on writing and grammar. And to go back to what Mr. McCormick said, I mean, I think reading and writing is really taken a dip since COVID across the Commonwealth. So this will be a great opportunity to support our students who need that extra support with the writing and grammar. On page twenty-one, we added a math course. It's called Intermediate Math. And again, this is to reinforce math concepts. And what it'll do is our students who struggle with Algebra One and Geometry will take this class to reinforce those standards and give them some remediation before they move into Algebra Two. We see through our data that statistically, kids struggle when they move into that Algebra Two class. This will give, if needed, that extra support before they move into Algebra Two. On page twenty-three, after talking to our science team here and science teachers in several other districts we've collaborated with, we're going to move our environmental science. That will become a ninth grade course. Girl may say a tenth grade course. And we're going to move biology from ninth grade to tenth grade. And the thought there is that districts who have made this change have seen a big improvement in their scores and their biology scores because the environmental class will give them some of that support and that pre-knowledge before they go into the biology class. And then we've added a couple of new electives on page forty-one and forty-two. We have a Character and Leadership, which I hope to be doing actually a little bit of co-teaching with that. And that's going to promote leadership skills focusing on teamwork, goal setting, communication, and collaboration. Again, this will be offered for our upper-class seniors. And then Ms. Margolis, our Adjustment Counselor, will also be teaching a class next year, which she's pretty excited about. Social, emotional learning class, but all the strong focus on the S E L needs of our students. Focus on strategies for managing emotions, how to handle challenging situations and interpersonal conflict. to handle challenging situations and interpersonal conflict. We really feel that this class will help our students sort of be proactive instead of reactive, and help our students with the social-emotional needs that so many students today struggle with across the country. So those are really the only changes that we have.
So the.
So is there a motion to approve the program of studies? So, and a second?
Second.
Questions?
Yes. So the stuff that's not showing up, that looks like it's waited out, you removed those?
Yes, so, thank you, I meant to.
I was going to ask that question.
Yeah, I meant to mention that. So what we did is, I've seen this, we've done some work in other districts, so those classes, we can still offer them, we don't want to remove them completely out of our program of studies, so we faded them out, and that shows, like you said, that we're not offering them this year, but perhaps in the following years, we would bring them back. So that way you can still see that we have it, but it's not being offered next year.
And I'd like to say that I like to see the DPT and CPT strategies, I think that honestly, it needs to be part of all curriculum, not just a special project day. There's a lot of good skills there that everybody could use with my goodness and whatnot, so it's good to see.
Any other questions? All those in favor of approving the program of studies? opposed? I don't believe there's anything else under new business, going back to the agenda, sorry.
It's a long way back.
I was going to say it's 100 and something pages, so give me a break for a moment. Okay, anything for executive session? I'll look to take a motion to adjourn?
No. We have to thank Ron Ryanell for his service on the board, this is his last meeting, I just want to make sure that I take the time to say thank you so much, Ron, for everything, your mentorship for me personally, and then for all the work that you've done on the school committee, thank you so much. I know, you aren't going to get away with it.
Okay, thank you, you're welcome, I appreciate it. I know, I mean, ignore that. Well, I won't be here to approve, so I really don't care, do what you want, so. I will, I will say this, so I was going to not say anything, I will say this, so this ends the third year of this term sitting on the school committee, I served eight years prior on the Northwood Field School Committee, I served three years for the Baycott School Committee. I have to tell you, the only reason I do that, or I did that, is because I absolutely love this school, I love this town, I love the people of this town, I think this town has a unique quality to it. Anybody who's fortunate enough to be associated with the town or the school, students, staff, paraprofessionals, town administrators, you all are very fortunate. This is a great, great place to live, great place to be. I owe everything that I have, everything that I've done, to the people who raised me in this town, my parents, this staff that were in the school district when I was here, everything is because of them. Now, did I do smart? Sure I did. But if those folks didn't believe in me, and didn't give me the opportunity to step up and do what I did, it would not have happened. My doing those times with the school committee here in Baycott was just me trying to give back. To those of you who are upset and think that I didn't do a good job, I'm really sorry, my intention was always for the benefit of the kids and the benefit of this district. If I've upset you, I apologize, not my intention. That being said, I love this district, if you are thinking at all about not coming to school here, please reconsider. This is a great place to go to school. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
I'm also moved.
Second. All in favor? Thank you all.